Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. You've joined us in the midst of some technical difficulties and some interesting experiences and learning how to use Zoom, but we're here, all present and accounted for. I'll do a roll call in just a second. This is the July meeting of your Louisville Town Council. We've got a great agenda this evening. I hope you'll enjoy the issues that are coming before us. With that, we'll take roll call. Mr. Smitherman.
Present.
Ms. Hunt.
Happy Thursday.
Mr. Franklin. Fred, I think we'll need to hear you guys say yes. The two of you say yes, if you would. I think you're on mute. Oh, you're on mute.
Still on mute.
There we go. I forgot about that one step tonight. I'm on cue now.
Okay, we're there. Ms. Welch.
Evening.
Ms. Foster.
Evening, present.
Very good. All council members are present, including staff. Hank Perkins, our town manager, Ms. Joyce Walker, our town clerk, Ms. Stacy Talbert, our town planner, Ryan Mosher from our Public Works Department, Bo Half, our attorney, and Pam Orell, our finance officer. Bo, would you be kind enough to lead us in an invocation to start our meeting this evening?
I'd be honored. Thanks. Let's pray. God, our Father, we give you thanks for another beautiful day here in North Carolina. We are so thankful for the gift of the town of Louisville. We thank you for your many blessings. Father, keep us mindful of those who are not as blessed as we are, and keep us also mindful of the many concerns that there are around in our country and in our world. Help us to work through all of our problems and to be prepared to love one another. Now, during this meeting, we ask you to give us wisdom and give us courage as we go about the town's business. Your blessings upon the council and upon the staff, we ask all these things in your holy name. Amen.
Thank you, Bo.
Thank you very much.
Ladies and gentlemen, we've had two changes to our agenda this evening since our briefing. If you'll go over to new business, these will be F and G. F is a budget ordinance for our contract with the Piedmont Triad Regional Council for Stormwater Management. G is awarding a contract to Labella Associates of Charlotte, and that's the group that's going to be helping us with our paving, study, and prioritizing our roads. Ms. Walker, have there been any other additions or changes?
Not really additions or changes. However, Mrs. Foster asked this afternoon if she could further clarify some information on the three sets of minutes. So with your permission and the council's permission, I'd like to pull those away from the consent agenda and look at the changes individually, if you don't mind.
No, ma'am, that'll be fine. Very good. With that, do we have a motion to accept the agenda?
Motion.
Ms. Hunt makes the motion, or was it Ms. Foster? Ms. Foster makes the motion. Ms. Hunt makes the second. Thank you very much. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Mr. Smitherman. Mr. Franklin. Ms. Hunt.
Aye.
Ms. Foster.
Aye.
Ms. Welch.
Aye.
Dr. Sadler.
Aye.
Thank you. The mayor is aye. That is unanimous. Our agenda is set for this evening. Moving to the consent agenda, we will take the resolution, which is our monthly financials, to approve those. Ms. Orell, are there any surprises that we should know about?
No, not at all.
Very good. I'm assuming we're still in the black?
I'm sorry, say that again.
The needle is still in the black?
Yes.
Yes, it is.
Yes, okay. Good. Toward the F that says full. Okay, very good. Okay, Mrs. Walker, let's go ahead and take that first set of minutes, which is our briefing and action meeting of June 4th.
We need to go ahead and vote on your consent agenda.
Well, I guess we would, won't we? So, very good. Is there a motion to accept the one item on the consent agenda?
Wait, 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 wait a minute. Wait, wait. Are we pulling all three sets of minutes off Joyce, or just two of the three?
All three.
All three.
Go ahead then. I just want to make sure I knew what was going on.
Mr. Smitherman, I believe you made the motion.
I'll make the second.
Mr. Franklin makes the second. Any discussions? All those in favor, please say aye. I'm sorry.
It's all right.
Somebody put a cue card up for me that says, "Mike, call the roll." Mr. Smitherman.
Aye.
Mr. Franklin. Ms. Hunt.
Aye.
Ms. Foster.
Aye.
Ms. Welch.
Aye.
Dr. Sadler.
Aye.
That's a nice profile shot of you, doctor. I kind of like that a lot. Very good. The mayor votes aye. That is unanimous. Okay, Mrs. Walker, let's go ahead and take the minutes of June 4th, if you would.
Okay, so now if you want stuff screwed up, it'll be me. I'm going to share a screen.
Joyce.
Let's see how it happens. The problem here, we might have to go backwards only because of the way it came up on my computer.
That's fine. We'll take it in whatever order you can present it.
Does that work? I'm trying. Did that come up on yours?
You selected it, now you actually say share.
Oh, share computer. No. Where am I looking?
Share screen.
Oh, I got it. I got it.
Little green button.
There it is. All right, there we go.
That's it.
So, let's see the revisions, please.
Okay, this is the one from the 15th. Like I said, I have to go backwards only because of the way it came up. We just, hopefully you can see the revisions. It was on page two of three, and Mrs. Foster just wanted to give more clarification to the statements that were made. And if you agree with that, and you've already seen all of the rest of the minutes, if you agree with these changes, then...
Let me, I do want to ask this question because this is important, I believe, Mrs. Walker, and you can correct me if I'm heading down the wrong path. The minutes are the minutes as you've taken them from the tape. If there are corrections, council members could make those corrections and submit them to you. But do our rules allow us to do modifications?
What this is, is just a clarification. For example, generally, the only thing that I really have to do is to look at motions. Who made the motion? Who seconded the motion, and what the count was on ayes and nays. But this is just expanding information that I always put in the minutes. So this is just an expansion of information that was already there, talked about, but I was making it succinct, so to speak, and Mrs. Foster just wanted to expand on the conversation.
Great. And I guess what I'm making here is that this discussion, including these modifications, or at least a discussion of these modifications, will appear in our tape should someone question. Are we trying to change the minutes after the meeting?
Correct.
Great, very good. Very good. Thank you.
And I do, I watch the, re-watch them at least twice and take notes before I get my, give my feedback to Joyce and tell her what minute points, these points are.
Very good. Excellent. That's the way we should do it. Okay, council members, let's take a look at them.
I'm on my phone and not on my laptop. I'm having difficulty seeing this document. I'm going to try to get on on my laptop, but I'm not sure I'll be able to get there.
Joyce, can you go down? I don't know the context of four.
Can I go some more?
I need to see the top part.
Oh, I'm sorry. That was under council comments.
Okay. Now you can get out.
That was the discussion prior to adjourning the meeting.
Joyce, in number four, the last line, it says, "Council during the annual budget process." You need a T on the end of budget.
Thank you. Well, we can budge.
That's right.
Sometimes it is.
Okay, Ms. Walker, of those three changes, are there additional ones for these sets of minutes?
That's all I had.
Okay, council members, you've had a chance to review them. Ms. Foster, anything you'd like to add? Okay, very good. With that, we'll entertain a motion, and you'll need to speak up because I'm only seeing partial of our attendees. We'll entertain a motion to approve these minutes as amended.
I'll move for approval.
Ms. Welch makes the motion.
I've got a question. I'll go ahead and make a second, but I've got a question. Are we approving all three sets? So that needs to be reflected in the minutes?
No, we're actually not, Fred. We're only, we're taking these one set of minutes at a time.
That's what I wanted to clarify. So I'll second the motion to approve the minutes of June 15th.
Very good. Any other discussion? With that, let's see if I can remember all your names because you're not on my screen. Mr. Smitherman.
Approve.
Ms. Foster.
Aye.
Ms. Welch.
Approve.
Ms. Hunt.
Aye.
Dr. Sadler.
Aye.
Mr. Franklin. The mayor is aye. Those minutes are approved. Let's move to the next set, please.
Let's see if I can do this without screwing up everything. Close the current tab. Okay, so we'll go backwards again to June 11th. The first set that she wanted to provide was just giving you more information that on the planning board, this was on page four, and it was during the time that you were looking at the Longwood Village case that came up, and she just wanted to make sure that everyone also realized that the planning board thought that we'd be losing potential revenue with that change from commercial to residential. That was the first one she wanted to identify. And the second one was on page nine of 18, and she just wanted to make sure that the statement that our attorney told us about price points, et cetera, couldn't be discussed by law. And the third item was, if you recall, a discussion, there was a correction that needed to be made on the report, the staff report. So I highlighted the actual information that Ms. Talbert needs to correct. Those were the three items.
Okay, Ms. Foster, anything to add? Very good. Council members, we'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes as amended. Since all of you are not on my screen, I'll need a voice motion.
I've just got a question before we go to the motion.
Yes, sir.
The comment regarding revenue, losing revenue by changing zoning, is what we're saying here, is that a part of the discussion that evening? I just can't recall.
That was not part of your discussion. That was a comment that the planning board had made that Mrs. Talbert was asked to give to the council when you all were reviewing the case.
Mr. Sadler's asking, was that said by Ms. Talbert during the meeting?
As far as I know, it was. I just did not have it in the minutes.
Okay, so what you're saying is that she made mention of it during the meeting that the planning board wanted to convey to the council that there would be a potential loss of revenue by the change in zoning, is what we...
Yes.
I believe the question was asked of Ms. Talbert about why there was not unanimity on the vote, and she mentioned it at that point in time.
I don't know that I specifically remember mentioning revenue. And if Jean Bree watched it and that's what it is, then, you know, that's what it is, but...
Well, this and the one by law, I was just going from my own notes, and if the consensus of the group was that that did not happen, then by all means, you know...
Well, I do recall the discussion was, the planning board was concerned about losing commercially zoned property for the town that was already zoned commercial, and those things that would come along with, you know, those opportunities of commercial property. But I don't recall it actually being surrounded by revenue for the town.
Yeah, and I, council member Franklin, didn't you make a comment about also being concerned about the loss of potential commercial property? But I don't remember being wrapped in that either about revenue specifically, but...
I did mention something to the effect of the fact that we were losing, you know, a piece of zoned commercial property. However, you know, it would have been great if something had happened there in the last 25 years, and that this particular property has been presented to us will probably be best suited to build this project out versus a commercial-type situation, especially in today's environment, you know?
That part I know.
Yeah.
Remembered, and so I think you are referencing, because I don't think there's any specific discussion about that.
Word revenue.
Want to take out the revenue part?
That's my suggestion.
If it didn't happen, let's take it out.
Bree, did you have, did you have any other note about that?
No, my note, my note references commercial, not revenue there under June 11th.
Yep. My notes say Fred recognizes that commercial property is being lost to residential.
My notes were commercial to residential also, so I'm going to change that word revenue to, well, I've already got changed from commercial to zoning to residential.
Yeah.
You want me to just take that part out totally then?
Can you scroll back down to it?
Yeah.
Mrs. Walker?
I'm sorry.
Can you scroll back down to that section?
Oh, that was...
Keep going. Oh, no, now we're...
Oh, sorry. Right there.
Yep, I'm getting rid of the whole thing then.
Oh, that correction, just leave that out?
Yep, out. I'll fix that. It's not revenue, but residential.
I would suggest taking the word about out and just say concern, well, excuse me, about the change. Add the word the, you know, leave about.
Yeah, I'll just fix that. The was already there.
Okay.
Yeah, the was already there. I'll fix that.
The there, I gotta be there.
Those changes, I would move approval.
Dr. Sadler makes the motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Franklin makes the second. Any discussion? Mr. Smitherman.
I agree.
Ms. Foster.
Aye.
Ms. Welch.
Aye.
Ms. Hunt.
Aye.
Dr. Sadler.
Aye.
Mr. Franklin. Mayor is aye. That's unanimous. Ms. Walker, let's go on to the third set, please.
Click the tab.
I got it. You know, my eyesight's not too well getting old. This is the last one, and this is the one for June 4th. Dr. Sadler gave me the first correction. He wanted this to read a little bit smoother, and this was when, I believe, Pam was talking about the community center. And so the first correction is just to change things and make it read a little smoother. Pam, is this okay with you?
I haven't read it yet. I'm reading it now.
Okay.
I don't think it changes the meaning.
Item four.
I think it just changes the way it's said.
That's all, that's all it was, yes. And then Ms. Foster gave me item one here. The community center site plans, elevations, et cetera, will be provided as part of the public hearing on June 16th.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Ms. Walker, any other changes on this?
Nope, that's all. And I think I added in a verb.
Okay. I'm missing verb, a dangling particle here or there. We're all good.
I had those.
With those changes, may I have a motion, please, to accept these minutes?
Move approval.
Dr. Sadler makes the motion.
Second.
Ms. Welch makes the second. Any discussion? Mr. Smitherman.
I approve.
Ms. Foster.
Aye.
Ms. Welch.
Aye.
Ms. Hunt.
Aye.
Dr. Sadler.
Aye.
Mr. Franklin. Mayor is aye. That's unanimous. Okay.
Focus out and stop sharing.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Joyce.
Okay.
Very good. Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to have an introduction of our new deputy, Deputy Goings, but he had a previous commitment that he had to attend to. So we'll get to meet him next month, and he'll be introduced by Corporal Stringer. There are two opportunities this evening, ladies and gentlemen. If you'd like to participate in a public forum, this is an opportunity to share any of your thoughts that you may have with the council. Our opportunity to listen to you, we generally don't engage in discussion, but this is your opportunity to tell us what's on your mind. Mr. Menor, do we have anybody?
Unless Bo's intern wants to say something, we have no one in attendance for comments.
Bo, I think you probably instructed your intern that this is a great meeting to watch.
I did instruct her it was a great meeting to watch, and I'm sure she's enjoying it. I don't know that she'll have any...
She may have a comment at the end after she watches. Very good. With that, we'll close the public forum. If you have comments and you're watching at home and you'd like to submit those, you can submit them in writing to townclerk@lewisvillenc.net, townclerk@lewisvillenc.net. And please do those, do that relatively quickly so we can incorporate it in the next seven minutes. Mrs. Walker, you have our Triad Alcoholic Beverage Control Board nominations.
We just have two people who've applied, Timothy Dubois and Ed Smith. And under normal circumstances, I would have provided to everyone a written ballot. However, we are in a different circumstance. So, mayor, would you like to take it from here?
Certainly. What we'll do, ladies and gentlemen, I think you've had a chance to take a look at, it was in your drop box, look at both of the resumes and applications by each one of these individuals. Hope you'll have a chance to consider those. We will do a roll call vote, and if you will express your preference at this time, when your name is called, that will be great. Mrs. Walker will keep our tally. So this is for the appointment to the Triad Alcohol Beverage Control Board. Two nominees, Mr. Dubois and Mr. Smith. Start, Mrs. Smitherman.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you. Ms. Hunt.
Mr. Smith.
Mr. Franklin.
Mr. Smith.
Ms. Welch.
Mr. Jones. I mean, Smith.
Ms. Foster.
Mr. Smith.
Let's see, it seems like I missed somebody.
Dr. Sadler.
Dr. Sadler, he's off my screen. Dr. Sadler.
I'm sent it. Oh, my. Okay, now. He has been, we assume he's been lost by technological glitch, so we need to give it... Oh, he was waiting to come back in. Oh, no, he is there. He's showing his panelist, but I don't see him.
I think he lost us.
Well, he's showing...
Oh, yeah, he's back. He made it to attend to you again.
Yeah.
All right. Hold on, here he comes. Seven issues.
There he is. I think he was going to try to get back on his laptop.
That's what happened. I was finally able to get up on my laptop so I could...
Very good. Dr. Sadler, we're in the middle of a vote for the Triad Alcoholic Beverage Control Board. You are the next to the last one to vote on our two applications, Mr. Timothy Dubois and Mr. Smith.
I voted for Mr. Smith.
Okay. Mayor makes that unanimous, Mr. Smith. Congratulations. I know you do a great job. You're not allowed to drink chocolates, but it's good that we know you'd be representing us there. Mr. Dubois, thank you so much for your application. In this particular case, we weren't able to appoint you to this board, but I hope you'll continue to show interest in the town, and maybe there's some other committees or boards you'd like to serve on in the future. Thank you, council. Under new business, Stacy, you have a primer for us on UDOL 096. Stacy, you're muted.
Muted.
There we go.
Figured I was. Okay, this request is for an amendment to an original special use zoning that was approved in 2000. The property is approved specifically for combined use multifamily under PB, which is pedestrian business zoning district. This means the property is approved for a multifamily development and any other combined use that is allowed in the PB zoning district. The site plan was never developed when it was approved in 2000, so under our sunset clause in the ordinance, any new proposals on this property has to go through the same process of original approval, which was a public hearing process, and have final approval from the town council. This is not a request for a zoning change or changes in the already allowed uses. For this particular case, L096, the request is for a 39-unit multifamily development combined with a restaurant. The total acres of the site is 1.56 acres. The property fronts the Great Wagon Road, therefore, the property lies within the downtown overlay and has to adhere to the specific guidelines in our ordinance for the downtown overlay district. Resolution 2020048 is to set a public hearing for case L096 for Thursday, August 13th. This is to be an electronic meeting. Therefore, council will also need to set a date to reconvene after August 13th to vote on the matter after they allow for the 24 hours of written comments to be received.
Very good. In preparation for our meeting next month, do we have any questions for Stacy that we'd like her to answer tonight or to research before that meeting?
I've got one big question. I'm assuming that at least by our briefing in August that we will be receiving site plans and things of this nature that I haven't been able to see at this point in time. And I'm, again, don't know that it's appropriate time, but just give us an update, if you will, of how we're going to receive information about what's coming before us.
I believe that was it. Joyce, was that in your packet for tonight?
Yeah, I, you had sent me some information, I think it was yesterday. So I went ahead and added that into the packet so that everybody could review the old information as well as the new information to see what was changed.
Well, I apologize. I haven't had a chance to go through that, you know, on the computer yet. It was sent on the phone and just haven't had that opportunity. So I will take a look at that if I have any questions, I'll ask after that.
Ms. Hunt?
Yeah, will we see any elevations regarding the parking garage and any lighting on the exterior? Is there going to be any site on any...
The lighting will have to adhere to the lighting requirements in our ordinance. We have other standards for that. And then the parking garage is just the basement level. So there's technically no elevation for that because it's underground.
Okay, what about as you're entering into the parking garage? Will you somehow show us what that's going to, or is that any way we can see that?
The elevations that you received in your packet, you will see that, I believe, on the north elevation. It should show that.
That was the last part, the last one. That was the last, the last one that you sent me. It's in the packet.
Thank you.
Anything else for Stacy? Very good. Council members, as you know, this is when we do our research, and this is when we try to make our determination about how we are going to approve or not approve this particular project. Stacy is more than available to answer any questions you have between now and when we have the public hearing. So if there are no more questions right now, we'll entertain a motion to set a public hearing on Thursday, August 13th to receive comments on UDOL 096.
So I moved.
Mr. Franklin makes the motion.
Second.
Mr. Smitherman makes the second. Any further discussion? Mr. Smitherman.
I approve.
Mr. Franklin.
Caught me writing down. I approve.
Ms. Hunt.
I'm aye.
Ms. Foster.
Aye.
Ms. Welch.
Aye.
Dr. Sadler.
Aye.
Mayor is also aye. That's the date of our public hearing. Once again, ladies and gentlemen, that will be advertised in our Facebook page, on our town website, and in the minutes of this meeting that will go out here, hopefully a week or so before August 13th.
This will also be advertised in the publications and the journal and so forth, like we always do.
Yes, yes. Don't worry, public hearing. You're right, Fred. Council members, do you wish to meet the Monday following this, which would be the 17th? 17th, allowing for the 24 hour period for, for public comment? Would you like to meet on Monday, the 17th, to hold our vote on this item? Or is there another date that's more appropriate that you think?
The motion to set it for the 17th?
Seventeenth.
Six P.M.
Six P.M. Mr. Franklin makes the motion.
Second.
Mr. Smitherman makes the second. Any discussion? Mr. Smitherman.
I approve.
Mr. Franklin.
I approve.
Aye.
Ms. This is Foster.
Aye.
Ms. Welch.
Aye.
Dr. Sadler.
Aye.
Mayor is aye. So we will have our public hearing on Thursday, August 13th with our council consideration on Monday, August 17th. Thank you, folks. Pam, I think you've got the next two or three items for us.
Yes, the next three items involve amendments to our capital reserves. And if you recall last Thursday, I briefed you on these. So we'll go through them one at a time for your vote. And the first one is ordinance 2020030. This is amending the Great Wagon Road Capital Reserve. And it's amending the reserve so that we can suspend the transfer from the general fund into the reserve in the 2020, 2021 fiscal year, but that transfer will be resumed in the next fiscal year ending 2022.
Very good. Council members, as you recall, initially we had planned to skip our contributions to the build, land and building funds and use that money to, towards the first payments for the community center. We have since paid off the town hall, so we will not be facing dual mortgage payments during those particular months. Question becomes, do we still want to, and this is just the discussion portion, do we still want to suspend our contributions to the land and building fund, even though we won't have the double?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
That suspended, that suspension wasn't going to be until next fiscal year.
I think we had, didn't we have, didn't we suspend it because, Hank, we were going to have two?
No.
We're not going to have double mortgage payments?
That was, that was forecasted for next fiscal year.
Okay, well, rewind the tape, everybody. Scratch the minutes. That didn't exist. Sir, any further discussion? Any questions for Pam? Very good. We'll entertain a motion. We will entertain a motion. Mr. Franklin makes the motion.
Melissa.
Ms. Welch makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Oh.
And Mr. Smitherman, I'm still rewinding it. Mr. Smith. Mr. Franklin. Ms. Hunt.
Aye.
Ms. Foster.
Aye.
Ms. Welch.
Aye.
Dr. Sadler.
Aye.
Mayor is aye, that's unanimous. Keep rolling, Pam.
Okay, next we have ordinance 2020031. This is amending the municipal buildings and land capital reserve fund. And this is just a documentation issue documenting the transfers that have been made out of the reserve over the last few months into the capital project fund for the community center. And those transfers totaled $423,200.
Any questions for Pam?
No.
Entertain a motion?
Motion.
Ms. Foster makes the motion. Mr. Smitherman makes the second. Any discussion? Excuse me. Mr. Smitherman.
I approve.
Dr. Sadler.
I approve.
Ms. Foster.
Aye.
Ms. Welch.
Aye.
Mr. Franklin. Ms. Hunt.
Aye.
Mayor is aye, so aye also, so that is unanimous. One more, Pam?
Next is, yeah, but next is ordinance 2020032. This is amending the Stormwater Capital Reserve Fund, and this is changing the transfer from the general fund into the reserve in the 2020, 2021 fiscal year from $95,000 to $25,825.
Questions for Pam? Entertain a motion?
We've got a question.
Yes.
Most of Pam. What is the total in that fund?
The total right now?
Yeah.
After we make that transfer, it'll be, it's around $560,000. And that's, that's what we were capped at.
Right, okay, sounds great. Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve this ordinance.
Mr. Franklin makes the motion.
Second.
Ms. Foster makes the second. Any discussion? Very good. Dr. Sadler.
Aye.
Keeping you guys on your toes, I'm jumping around a little bit here. Ms. Foster.
Aye.
Ms. Welch.
Aye.
Ms. Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Smitherman.
I approve.
Mr. Franklin. Mayor is aye also, that's unanimous. Pam.
Okay, next we have a budget amendment. This is ordinance 2020034, amending budget ordinance 2020001 in the amount of $273,192 to increase the appropriation for debt service in order to retire the town hall mortgage early.
Any questions for Pam?
I was just going to point out, we had already budgeted $197,560 in the current year for debt service. So basically, we're just increasing that line item so we can pay off the entire mortgage plus any accrued interest.
And Pam, this, this payment is the one that's going to be made this month, right?
Right, I'm going to make it tomorrow if you approve it tonight.
Okay.
Very good.
Move approval.
Ladies and gentlemen, so you know, when we built the town hall, I believe we borrowed 2.8 million to build.
That's correct.
And that was 10 years ago?
It was in November 2008.
2008, so it was 12 years ago. We're paying this off early. We are going to save the taxpayers of Lewisville about $13,000 in interest that we won't be paying. Additionally, as we move forward, begin to think about building the community center, we will only be carrying one debt on the town books, which will be the community center as we retire the town hall debt. I wish we had a mortgage that we'd hold up and burn it tonight because this is a big event for, for us in Lewisville. We are, we are real excited to pay this off. So council members with that comment, unless anybody has something else?
I have a comment, please.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Welch.
Yeah, I was just reflecting about our, our new town hall. As I recall, those 10 years ago, initially we were just going to build part of it, but it was during the Obama administration. And because it was shovel ready, we were able to build the entire town hall. So once again, we were fortunate there and it's a beautiful town hall.
Absolutely. Mr. Franklin.
Yes, I believe I heard Dr. Sadler make the motion to approve this. I'll make the second.
Very good. Any further discussion? Mr. Smitherman.
I approve.
Ms. Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Franklin.
Aye.
Ms. Welch.
Aye.
Ms. Foster.
Aye.
Dr. Sadler.
Aye.
Mayor is aye and that's unanimous. Burn the mortgage. Excellent. Pam, you're still rolling here, I think.
Okay, we have another budget amendment. This past fiscal year, we entered into a contract with PTRC, which is Piedmont Triad Regional Council, and we engaged them to do our stormwater mapping. And the contract was not completed by the end of last fiscal year, so it's going to straddle this fiscal year as well. So I need to reappropriate the, our remaining funds for the contract. So I'm asking you tonight for a budget amendment in the amount of $23,313 to complete that contract.
Very good. Any questions?
Motion.
This, I think Ms. Foster makes the motion. I saw Ms. Hunt's hand go up at the same time, so Ms. Hunt is the second. Any other discussion? Very good. Mr. Smitherman.
I approve.
Ms. Hunt.
Aye.
Ms. Welch.
Aye.
Mr. Franklin.
Ah.
Ms. Foster.
Aye.
Dr. Sadler.
Aye.
Mayor is aye also, that is unanimous. Okay, next one, Pam.
Actually, that's Ryan.
You're right, it is Ryan. Just a point of clarification here, when are we going to discuss the handout that you sent out earlier this evening regarding the, to give the council a little primer on it?
I'm going to handle that under manager's report.
Manager's report, very good. Thank you. Okay. Mr. Moser.
Yes, sir. This is for the, this is for the pavement condition survey we've been talking about a little while. It's resolution 2020050, awarding contract to La Bella Associates of Charlotte in an amount of not to exceed $13,700 for a pavement condition study of all the asphalt roads in town. Hopefully they, if you all approve it, we will do this and it'll be done before September 15th, before we can do the fall paving.
Very good. Any questions for Ryan? Ladies and gentlemen, so you know, we just don't kind of throw darts at the map, at the roads on the map on the wall, trying to determine which roads we pave next. We do have a conditions study and it's an independent engineering firm that comes out and does it. They rank our 244 roads based upon the conditions and then we as a council, actually our public works department makes recommendations based on that. And generally speaking, we take the roads that are in the worst condition first and work, work down the list.
Mayor, I have a comment. Ryan, you said that was going to be in September. Is that current area is going to hopefully come back prior to September?
Yes, ma'am. Hopefully so.
Thank you for giving me a timeline or us a timeline. I appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions for Ryan? We'll entertain a motion.
I'll move for approval.
Ms. Welch makes the motion.
Second.
Ms. Foster makes the second. Any discussion? Mr. Smitherman.
Aye.
Mr. Franklin.
Ah.
Ms. Hunt.
Aye.
Ms. Foster.
Aye.
Ms. Welch.
Aye.
Dr. Sadler.
Aye.
Mayor is aye and that's unanimous. Okay, Hank?
Okay, we don't have any upcoming events for Shellford Square Town Holidays for the remaining portion of July.
I'll give you later. I didn't realize.
All right, I'm picking up something. Okay. I do have some reminders for Thursday, July 16th at 6:00 P.M. We will have the public hearing to meet and receive comments on the debt issuance for the property at 7632 Warren Park Drive. Following that, on Monday, July 20th, 2020, at 6:00 P.M., we'll have a second meeting to allow the 24 hours to receive written comments on the public hearing. And this is authorized by session law 2020-3. And then lastly, we'll meet again on Thursday, July 23rd at 6:00 P.M. to meet, to approve the minutes from the July 16th and the 20th minutes. And then after that, as the mayor mentioned, we do have a presentation for consideration for council related to the amount, I guess, or the term that we are going to look at for taking out on the community center. I'm going to prepare my desktop and then share my screen and then turn the discussion over to our finance officer, Pam Morrell.
Okay, Hank is going to pull up a schedule and I also emailed this out to everyone this afternoon. We heard back from BBNT on a quote for our loan for the community center.
Hank, can you make that a little bigger, please?
Yes, sir, I will.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Pam.
Oh, that's fine. Okay, now BBNT provided us with two options for our, our loan. And I'm going to go through each one. First of all, option number one in the table at the top provides for a 15-year loan at 2.06%. We would borrow up to $2 million. If we did borrow the full $2 million over the life of the loan, we would pay interest of $329,600. That would give total payments over the life of the loan, principal and interest of $2,329,600. Just to show you the affordability of the mortgage payments, our first, more, our first year's principal and interest payments would come to $174,533. So that's option number one. Option number two on the quote provides for a 10-year loan at 1.8%. We would still borrow up to $2 million. If we borrowed the, the full $2 million over the life of the loan, we would pay interest in total of $198,000. So total payments over the life of the loan, principal and interest would be $2,198,000. In the initial year of the payback, our first payments would come to $236,000. And what we're asking council to do tonight is, is to advise us of their preference between option one or option two. Obviously, with option two, it's the shorter payback, but it does give us a lower interest. If you go with option two over the life of the loan, you will save in interest $131,600. And if you go with option two, like I said, your initial year payment will be $236,000 in principal and interest. We can, we can well afford to pay that. As the mayor pointed out a while ago, tomorrow we'll pay off the town hall debt. So basically, you're swapping, you know, one mortgage for another. And also down at the very bottom of that schedule, in the last, in the past few months, we've kind of been throwing some numbers around and some percentages of what we thought our loan would come in at. And in talking to you in the past, we had been assuming that we would take out a mortgage for 15 years. And as a conservative estimate, we had been using 3% in our planning as our interest rate. So we, we were very pleased today when we heard that BBNT was offering us 1.8% on a, on a 10-year mortgage. So that's quite a savings there. So are there any questions?
I've got a question regarding the initial payment amount is, what's that, 60, $62,000 difference? Is that going to be an annual difference?
Well, that, that, from the initial payment, it will go down a little bit each year.
So do you have the amortization schedule you can make available to us? I don't need it, obviously, but just some, for some point in the future. And is it your belief that the town can absorb that difference in payment?
It is because, keep in mind, not only do we not have the town hall mortgage anymore, but we can also suspend in whole or in part the transfer into the municipal building land reserve that we normally make from the general fund. But we normally make a transfer of $170,000 each year. So I think there, we can, we can more than afford to go with the 10-year loan. Yes.
Okay, and I have two other things. One is, should we be reflecting this as TRUist rather than BBNT?
Well, I left it as BBNT because that was what was on the letterhead of the quote.
Okay, all right. The, the only other comment that I would make is that I'm on TRUist local board. That's just FYI, I don't, I don't believe it presents a conflict, but you, you need to know that.
And Dr. Sadler made inquiry of me and I indicated to him that I did not believe it to be a conflict because he has no direct financial interest in the transaction at issue.
Pam, do you recall, I'm sorry, go ahead, Ms. Hunt.
Have we gotten quotes from other institutions as well, or?
No, just BBNT.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Pam, do you recall, maybe in some documentation you have what our initial payment for the town hall was 12 years ago?
Yes, it was $300,000.
Okay, so we started on a, on a $2.8 million loan at $300,000 and then obviously that reduced as we reduced the principal. So here we're proposing, we're not borrowing nearly as much money, but we're proposing to only have that initial payment of 236. Okay?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any questions of Pam?
I have something, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
The statistics that are the thing that she ran for us about how this is going to bring our percentage down from where we're like over 100% for what the state recommends for us to have. If we go with option two, would it be possible to have that ran with what our percentage is and what, how long it would take to build it back up? Am I making sense?
Yep.
I think. I don't know that this borrowing is going to affect that.
Okay.
That's the reserve you're talking about, David?
That's correct.
Yes, when, when I was talking about how our percentage would go down, that was because we were going to be transferring money from the general fund. So how much we borrow or what, or what our repayment term is will not impact that at all.
Okay, thank you.
I would, David, I would add though, that it, what will affect. I would, David, I would add, though, that it, what will affect that percentage is how much money we pull out of the general fund to go along with this borrowed amount. Because that, what you're talking about is the percentage of general fund to the operating budget. Okay?
Correct. Thank you.
Yeah.
Very good. Any other questions for Pam? Pam, congratulations on this. We initially thought we were going to be at 3% in our projections, and we now are at 1.8%. And we actually are, by doing it for 10 years, are going to have a significant savings in interest. So I think it's a job well done. You've earned us $100,000, $103,000 today.
Thirty-one.
We're going with 10 years. $31,000 today. Very good. Any other questions?
We are going to clarify, we are going with the.
I'll make the motion. Generally, I don't do this, but I'm so proud of the work Pam has done. I'll make the mo-
Mayor? Mayor, come back. Clear.
Uh-oh.
Pretty good.
Let's give him a minute or two to come back.
Okay. There he is.
This is crazy. I'm freezing up on it. Did I get my whole motion in?
No.
Turn it over, please.
Okay. The motion then is to, and let me get my screen back up. There we go. The motion then is to take option two, which is a 10-year mortgage at 1.8%, and borrow up to $2 million. And that would be the motion.
I'd love to second that.
Very good. Ms. Welch makes the second. Any further discussion? Mr. Smitherman?
I approve.
Ms. Foster?
I.
Mr. Franklin?
Ah.
Ms. Hunt?
I.
Ms. Welch?
I.
Dr. Sadler?
Aye.
Did you guys, Mayor is I, did you guys at least get in my comment about, I'm so proud of the work Pam has done on this?
Yes.
Yes.
Would not mind if you said it again.
Good.
We still have our meeting on July 15th to formalize this. Is that not accurate?
July 16th.
Very good. Hank, would you like to, do you have anything else on the manager report you want to go over?
No, sir. I've got that finished. I'll move on to approvals at the briefing.
I've got a question. I got a question.
Yes.
Do we actually need to take a vote to set that public hearing on the 16th, or have we already done that?
And already, this is the public hearing for the 16th.
But do we have, do we have it set properly to hold it?
Yeah, we did it last week, our last briefing.
That's what I'm saying. All this is starting to run together, just.
It's okay.
Ms. Walker says it's okay. It's okay.
We've received the affidavit that it's been published.
Okay, Hank, how about our items of briefing, please?
Okay, at the briefing, we had the approval of Ordinance 2020033, and this was amending budget ordinance 202001 in an amount of $7,099 to reappropriate funds for the contract with Blue Stream Environmental LLC, which began in the 2019-2020 year and has carried over to the 2020-2021 fiscal year. And that is it for the, the materials that were approved.
Ladies and gentlemen, as you know, we have a briefing the first Thursday of every month. And during that time, sometimes we find it necessary to take actions. In this case, we took an action to spend $7,099 of your money. So we figured it's important to report it out at our regular town council meeting. We're now at the point for our second opportunity for the public to address the council. If you have anything you'd like to share, this is your opportunity. Mr. Manager, do we have anybody in the waiting room?
We still have the intern.
Well, would the intern like to, to make a comment at this point?
We won't be able to hear, but she can raise her hand.
You can raise your hand if you'd like to.
She may not know how to do that. I think you right-click and raise hand.
Well, very good. Bo will teach you how to do these meetings while you're still an intern and will, will, will allow you an opportunity to speak at next meeting as well. We look forward to hearing from you. Council members, any final thoughts? Will we adjourn? If not, Mr. Perkins, you leave tomorrow for a two-week hiking trip?
That's correct.
Very good. You've got your dehydrated food packed and your snakebite kit and your bear repellent and all that other stuff?
18 pounds of food.
Be safe. Yeah, be safe.
Thank you. I will.
Will we hear from you at all during that two weeks?
If it's possible. I'm going to see what type of coverage I have. But I'll be in the White Mountains and Mount Washington will be over 6,000. Hopefully, I'll get some cell coverage in.
And your, the distance of your hike is how long this time?
108 miles.
Very good. And this gets you close to finishing your Appalachian Trail, doesn't it?
It will get me within 300 miles of the end of a 2,180-mile trail.
I've been going to drive the last part if you want to.
Well, we wish you the best. Have a great time. It's quite an adventure you're embarking on. Very good. With that, council members, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Mr. Smitherman makes the motion.
Second.
Ms. Foster makes the second. Any discussion? If not, Mr. Smitherman?
Good night, all.
Ms. Foster?
Good night.
Mr. Franklin?
Make a difference. Give blood. Good night, everyone.
Ms. Hunt?
I.
Mrs. Welch?
Yes, good night.
Dr. Sadler?
Bye.
Very good. Mayor is I. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you again for joining us at home or on Facebook this evening. We always appreciate your attentiveness to the business of your council. With that, we're adjourned.